Hey Jen. Why am I an early bird? I'm sorry, I'm such a dork.
This is great. We started seven.
Hi Annie. Jackie, isn't it cold out there?
Hello. All right. So thank you all for attending. Do we have a quorum here? Yes, it looks like we do. So the meeting is starting at 7:02. Sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late. I was all screwed up on Zoom. All right. First, public hearings. All right, and Jen Malcolm Brown, if you can keep an eye out for hands raised, I appreciate that. All right. Agenda and perpetual calendar, nothing to change there on my end. Warrants and gifts. Steve, are you on?
I imagine he's had a long night of plowing.
I would imagine, so no problem. Those.
I have the warrant, Dan, if you'd like.
Excellent. Do you want to read them through, please?
Sure. We have warrant 312 payroll warrant dated 1214 for $71,768.10. Warrant 313 dated 1228 for $72,021.81. Warrant 313, excuse me, 3013 dated the first for $11,468.09. Number 3014 dated 122 for $6,267.28. And warrant 3015 dated 1214 for $5,019.12.
All right, could we have a motion just to accept the warrants into the record?
I move to accept the warrants.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any gifts? No gifts, all right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th? Lauren.
Move to approve the minutes from December, from November.
19th. Katie, you want to second those?
Second, second.
All right, any amendments or changes? Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, any abstentions? No, passes unanimously, thank you. Unfinished business and updates reopening. Jennifer, would you like to start or would?
Sure, um, so I do have something that pertains to reopening that the leadership team, which is all the principals from Union 28 along with Bruce, our Director of Finance and Prudence Marsh, our Director of Student Support and Gillian, who's our CFCE Director, we recently met and it is concerning to me that we are approaching the holiday season and given what occurred after Thanksgiving with multi-household gatherings and with travel, I'm concerned that the holiday season will also bring upon us some multi-household gatherings and there may be some travel during the holiday season, so it is my recommendation in speaking with Jackie and the rest of the leadership team across Union 28 that when we return to school on the fourth, that we return for two weeks of remote learning to go through January 15th to return to in-person learning on January 19th, which is the day after Martin Luther King holiday. I feel it is the most prudent move. I feel it's for the health and safety of our community and out of an abundance of caution, I make that recommendation to the school committee this evening.
Thank you. Couple of questions, so on January 19th, who would be returning for students, like what grades?
We would return to our current phase that we're in now and then adjust the phases accordingly. And, you know, we can discuss the phase dates with the school committee, but upon return, we would return to the current phase that each of the union schools are in.
Okay. So I know the school committee needs to vote on that, so do we have a motion to accept the recommendation by Superintendent Colkeen?
I can run for that.
All right, Katie, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I'll open it up for discussion with school committee members. I would say I will speak for myself, certainly. You know, I've read lots of letters from, as I've imagined all the school committee members have, from parents and teachers, staff members. I certainly personally recognize and understand their concerns. I really feel strongly that it would be great to see students back in school, but I certainly understand the concerns and I also would agree with the recommendation to hold off until the 19th, especially because of conditions that exist. In that meaning, you know, the travel and the possibility of further infections, so I would support the recommendation. Any other school committee member have any comments or concerns or questions?
I also support the recommendation. I would just be curious about when we would make the determination, if that would be a decision we would make tonight or as we have more data following the new year to determine when additional students would return.
I do think it's important always to look at the data. Jackie and I consult quite regularly with the Board of Health. And if we remember way back to August, when we looked at our reopening plan, we did talk about all of the dates are tentative based on the trajectory of the virus, and so I would continue to recommend that same caveat that I want the students back in school. I know the teachers do too, but we have to consider health and safety and so I think we, Jackie and I would be looking at the data as we approach that January 19th return date and continue as we have to connect regularly with the Board of Health, who has been wonderful in and very responsive in meeting with us.
Yeah, I guess I just want to make a comment just in case anyone could misconstrue in any way what you said. I know that you and Jackie and the Board of Health have been meeting very regularly, have been looking at lots of information, have been keen in listening to everybody's concerns. So it's not like you're going to just start doing that. You have been doing that and I certainly appreciate it and I know that all of your efforts in the mitigation at the school, all of the decisions that you have to make weigh on you heavily as it does all of us on the school committee. All of us want the same thing. So I appreciate all of, all of what you are doing as well as the Board of Health, the time that they're putting into this and the making them available to the school is amazing and Jen Malcolm Brown had sent me some kind words the other day and I think my response to her was what will get all of us through this is acts of kindness, so I appreciate all of you. So we have a motion on the table and a second, which is to return to in-person learning beginning January 19th. And I believe that is for the grade that currently have been attending, so that's kindergarten first and second, am I right? Okay. And we will hear from administration when the other grades will be coming back to school as well at some point. Do I have all that right? All right.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
I will say that when I do the votes, we do just go with the blanked eye. Technically, we should be doing everything in a roll call vote on remote and because this is an important vote, I would ask that we do a roll call vote. So I will begin by saying Hayes, aye?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Fire under aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was there for the record.
Sorry, Dan. Steve is here now.
Okay. Steve, there was a motion.
Yes, I will abstain because I missed, I missed most of the
Okay.
The
All right, well with one abstention because he was not online to hear everything. All right, so my, my feeling is that I don't think that the state's going to come after us if we, if we put our minutes in with our regular vote, but the roll call vote I thought was important, so. All right. New business memorandum of understanding. A discussion and possible vote. Jennifer, did you want to go into executive session to discuss this? Do you feel?
Katie or Jen, do we want to discuss this now? We do have a we have another meeting Monday, I believe, correct? Yeah. So I don't think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Perfect. So we will move on. Does that sound good? All right. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, so you heard part of my report earlier, my recommendation. And Dan mentioned the state. So back in November, all of the principals filled out a student learning time survey. And it was sort of a dipstick survey that we looked at grades one and four, but it was supposed to be representative of the entire school and this occurred in all of the schools throughout the Commonwealth and there was a meeting with Rob Curtin, who does all of the data gathering at DESI and a meeting with the Commissioner for Superintendents. And the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is different from the department, voted to adopt regulations that the Commissioner recommended relative to student learning time. And there are requirements to, to really pertinent requirements for student learning time and all of this is based on the guidance we received from DESI over the summer about learning time. So hybrid learning must meet two requirements. We must provide 35 hours of live instruction over a 10-day school period. And we must have daily live check-in on all school days. And if we are in remote learning, we must provide 40 synchronous hours of instruction over a 10-day school period. And we must include synchronous learning each and every school day. And so we got data from DESI about our student learning data from the weeks of November 2nd and November 9th. And that information was collected and collated and that will be published. There was a public record request for all of the student learning time data, the SLT data for Commonwealth schools. And there will be regulation changes on January 19th that we have to meet those particular requirements. 35 hours of live instruction for hybrid with daily live check-ins or 40 synchronous hours of instruction with synchronous learning each day if we are fully remote. And all of the schools in Union 28 either met or were quite close, so I'm very happy to report that. The schools who did not make it in Union 28 were six to 12 minutes per day off. And that are just minor adjustments with our school schedule. But I know that there are schools across the Commonwealth who have a week on, week off, and the week off is remote and it's totally asynchronous. And so there are concerns at the state level for schools who are far and away not meeting those requirements. All of the principals and staff are looking closely at their schedules and our staff, as we all know, are very dedicated and there are probably times that they're not counting, that would count for student learning time. So I want to thank the principals for being so diligent in looking at the student learning time regulations and I want to thank the teachers for adapting their schedules, but I am very happy to report that Union 28 schools either met or were very close to the learning requirements from the state. And other than that, I have no further reports this evening, but I am, you know, free to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce, Director of Finance and Operations.
Okay. Don't have much tonight. We did get some additional coronavirus relief money for food service. I got $1,020 to help defray some of the costs associated with providing meals to the community, which every little bit helps now and that's what we got. Had somebody from Greenfield Glass look at the sliding doors in the conference room there. I haven't got a quote back, but I've been talking with Becky about some alternatives to what we're looking at now, so. Other than that, that's pretty much where we've been wrapping up some. There's a coronavirus relief fund grant that we got from the state that ends the end of December. It's a use it or lose it, so we've been transferring and spending some things related to the, the heat system and that kind of stuff to that grant, so it was $24,000, $5,000, we got something like that, so. Every little bit's helped and we've done quite a bit of work with a lot of, a lot of stuff for remote learning and air quality in the building, so.
Anything on the roof?
Um, Becky and I, she actually sent me a, they're doing a RFP or an RFI for a design professional as part of the process. She sent me the, they're working with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments procurement people. And she sent me a copy of that and reviewed it. We made some changes and I think it's probably going to go out. If it hasn't already, it's, it's going out over over the break and hopefully they'll have some proposals for design professional early in January and you know, looking at choosing a design professional to move forward with the roofs.
Excellent. Well, thank you for keeping on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I've asked her if I could be participant and she's granted that request. I think it's somebody from the school at least should be represented there, so.
Great, thank you. All right, Principals' report.
Hi, everybody. Happy snowy day. So I first just want to give a public shout out to the teachers and staff at Chutes Berry for always going above and beyond in everything that they do. And their complete professionalism, compassion and kindness towards the students at the school is something that makes me very happy every day. Um. So in terms of the synchronous learning time, I did meet with the teachers this week. Almost all of our classrooms were very close, if not meeting that synchronous learning time. Because the, the vote passed that we were, we will return for two weeks in a remote setting, which I do recommend. It means that all classes will need 40 hours of synchronous learning time over two weeks, which will shift some of the schedules instead of the 35 hours that the younger grades could have been doing. So that means that some families may see a shift in the schedule for their students, particularly the little kids, and we've been trying really hard to pump the mornings full of academics and the afternoons feeling less strenuous because everyone's exhausted from the virtual component. That is going to have to shift a little bit for us to be able to meet the, the learning time standards and so that is something that families need to know about now and I will communicate that within the Roadtown as well. Because it means that when we come back in January, the, the afternoons might feel a little bit different and and it might take some getting used to for some of those students. That's that. We're looking into either a visiting artist or a visiting I don't know, like performer to do some sort of a virtual assembly or a virtual something with the, with the school in January. I think that could be something really exciting and nice to look forward to. And as you know, we did, you know, I write all about this in my Roadtowns too, but we did start last week for that hybrid learning for the preschool through second grade and was not perfect, but it, it went very smoothly due to the professionalism and expertise of the teachers and staff at our school. And the families who read our many, many emails and our many, many asks and rules and follow through with that, so I just want to give a shout out to all those people. And then finally, I'm not, I'm not looking for any sort of an answer on this tonight, nor am I telling you that you should do it, but I know that Superintendent Colkeen shared with you the letter that the superintendents wrote around MCAS this year and I just want to voice that I would really like this committee to consider taking a vote to I don't even know what you say, how you say it, Jen, but taking a vote for us to not do it.
Sorry on the
Yes, I think that especially in this year that that is completely absurd. And even if there is a virtual component, there is absolutely no way that is a valid a valid anything on anything, whether it's what the student knows or what, what has been taught to them. It, I, I, I think it is absolutely I'm going to use a word that I liked when I was young, preposterous, that it's even being considered and again, I'm not asking for that to be any sort of a vote tonight, but I would like you to take that into consideration and possibly put it on a, on an upcoming meetings agenda. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm going to echo Jackie quickly. If anybody reads the Greenfield Recorder, Chip Wood, who's a renowned Western Mass educator, wrote a piece on this and all of the other school committees in Union 28 are looking to pass a resolution regarding the MCAS. And I also think it would send a strong message if at our joint supervisory meeting in January, it came from us as well with, you know, 25 signatures. And so I'm going to recommend that that go on that agenda. Thank you.
Hey, Lauren.
I'd just like to add to what Jackie said that I also think that the MCAS adds a layer of stress and to teachers and students as well as takes away time that is, that is more precious than ever this year. So I just want to add those thoughts.
Okay. So just for clarification for everyone, this the letter that you're referring to is the joint letter from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents that went to Governor Baker, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Stephen, did you have your question?
I'm I'm pulling it up now and I'll forward it to everybody. There, I have a draft letter from the region that Peter Demling wrote that is from the that is from the school committees and not it, you know, it's straight from the school committee and not from a joint letter. And it's 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 really good. And I'll I'll send it in a minute or two to everybody.
Okay, Lauren.
Is there a time constraint? Because for us to put this on the agenda or something, you know, would we need to do that prior to our our next expected meeting?
I don't think so, but I don't know, Dan. Do you know if there's a a time constraint?
Well, a resolution really doesn't. I mean, really, basically, it's just voicing our concern. And the more voices that people hear from, the better. So I actually do have a resolution that I'm willing to share. And then if it is adopted, we can do it this evening. Are you ready, Trevor? Be it resolved that the Chutes Berry School Committee calls for a moratorium on all high stakes testing for the 2020 to 2021 school year. So all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high stakes testing of three years.
I really like the three year part, Dan, particularly because we don't even know what the fallout is going to be from March to now with in terms of in terms of learning gaps.
So would the committee like to adopt that resolution? Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Okay, Trevor, did you get that resolution?
Yeah, let me I'll put in chat what I got and then you can tell me how how it's wrong. I don't see I don't see a chat function enabled for this meeting. So here's so here's what I got. Be it resolved that the Chutes Berry School Committee calls for a moratorium on standardized testing for the 2020 21 school year so that all students can focus on instruction. And we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on testing for three years.
I did say all high stakes testing as opposed to standardized testing.
Okay.
Okay. So there's been a motion and Lauren, were you seconding that?
Yep, second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote on that one as well. Hey, Zai.
Malcolm Brown, I.
Thomas Pecan Eye.
I under I.
So have an eye.
All right. And I do appreciate, you know, the the letter and I think it was very well written. I could see from the MASC from Glenn Kuchar that, you know, it was a little a little snarky there, which is typically him. But I think it was a very well written letter. So I appreciate both MASC and MAS joining together and really putting the pressure on legislators. So we've we've done our resolution in our part, and I think we can continue to advocate through our legislators. So. Okay. Was there anything else? Okay. Amherst Pelham Representatives Report.
I just have two little things. The well, not not little, but just two things. The first one is that the the JMLSC has met a couple of more times and there's still no progress. And we it we the Regional School Committee sent that request to the APA to reopen negotiations on November 2nd, and we still have not heard a word back from the APA. So we're still waiting on that. And the other thing, the big ticket item is the we were talking again about the deficit that the regional budget is going to be in. And it's going to be between 1.4 and 1.7 million dollars. And we have not started to talk about what's going to be cut, but that is the equivalent of 26 teachers. So we and one of the things that we did talk about with Amherst, the town council being so firm on their zero, you know, their level funding, which is actually a reduction that regardless of what, even if the three Pelham, Leverett and Chutes Berry band together, we can we there's no way the three of us could make up the Amherst deficit. So it we could all vote for 5% increases and it wouldn't it wouldn't change anything. So we're hoping that the Amherst Town Council, when they start to look at the budget, because they've never had to deal with this. They've always just rubber stamped something because they were all easy. So we're hoping that they'll actually take a a hard look at this and decide that they need to change their course. But we'll see. I'll keep you posted.
And Stephen, I have a question for you. How is the synchronized learning or synchronous learning in Amherst doing? How are their schools meeting the standard? You're on mute.
They didn't have the numbers on Tuesday night. But, you know, I mentioned that one of our last meetings that there was an attendance issue with free lunch students and the Latino population and the middle school. And they have done some hard outreach. And the numbers are are dropping significantly on the absences.
Great.
But I'll I'll let you know when I get the numbers for the the on time learning.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else, Steve?
Oh, yeah, I just want to thank Bruce for jumping in with the slider doors for the conference room because Matt has said that he doesn't have the time for that. And we're running into a snap forward to with the capital planning money. But thank you, Bruce. And yes, as Bruce said, the the roof is moving forward and it was brought to the attention of the capital planning. So the school committee has made it known that the roof is vital and.
Great. Thank you. So Union 28 report, I don't think we've met since our last meeting. Nothing to report there. And then Collaborative for Educational Services. There was a retirement Zoom party or whatever you want to call it for Bill Deal, who's retiring. I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the board because I'm chair and it was a very little emotional thing, some very wonderful things about a man that has really dedicated his life to education, social justice and equity issues. And so it'll be sad to see him go. I am very involved in the process for selection for the next executive director. And making sure so I'm I'm just making sure that the process is is being done efficiently and effectively. Making sure that all stakeholders have input, that advertising is reaching all sources, that this whole process adheres to the social justice and equity standards that we have at the collaborative. So that's ongoing. And the collaborative, as you know, is a fee for service organization. They're continuously working towards evaluating programs, looking at opportunities to better serve districts. So if you have any thoughts, questions, ideas, you can always shoot me an email. Karen Ruder will be who is the Deputy Director will be the interim. And things are going well there. That's all I have to say about that. All right, next is policy review. We have a final vote on remote learning, IHBHE. Do we have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Okay. Okay, Jen and Lauren. Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Final vote for immunization of students, JLCB. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve JLCB.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, and this obviously does not include preschool, correct?
I believe the commissioner has said it's a K through 12.
Okay.
Initiative. Sorry, I was delayed. I couldn't find my remote. I might my mute button.
Okay, thank you. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I think it passes unanimously. Any abstentions or anyone opposed? Okay, perfect. And lastly, the final vote for the policy on COVID related issues, EBC dash S. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve EBC dash S.
I'll second.
All right. And any further discussion? The only thing that in the fourth bullet, there's a whole list of like state, federal agencies and all of that. Do you see that, Jen?
Yes, comply with the emergency orders of the governor and here, yes.
So the only thing that I would question is the Board of Health, I don't think falls under any of those. I believe it's a municipal agency. And I wasn't sure on that, so I did check with someone. And it's the local regional public health department. And they did concur that the local health program coordinator on okay, um, let's see, they said the local board of health is a municipal agency. So I don't know if we want to just add municipal to that.
I'm fine with that. I mean, we do consult regularly with the Board of Health. So
and again, maybe.
We say and other agencies of municipal comma state comma and federal government.
Perfect. Okay, so I will propose that amendment. Do we have a second on that proposed amendment? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So lastly, is future business listing dates of next school committee and Union 28 Joint Supervisory Committee dates. So those are all on there. Jennifer, do we need to go into executive session or no? Because we have the next meeting scheduled.
Yep, I don't believe we're we're ready for that. We have our next meeting Monday, the 21st.
Okay, so is there anything else that the committee would like to bring up, say?
Can I just add in in preparation for that, will we need to anticipate that we at some point within the next few weeks, we'll need to pull an executive session together?
Okay. You let me know.
Yes.
Yeah, we might need a a one item agenda.
Certainly. And we can schedule an executive session and just post it by normal standards and it can be from, you know. All right. Steve?
Did Trevor give you the three warrants that I had emailed to him?
Bruce went over the warrants.
Okay. Because I did Trevor does have them.
Yes.
And I did sign them.
We did miss your reading of them, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm not as good as he is.
Not not as animated as Stephen. No.
All right. Well, if there is no other business, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much. You all have a great.
Everybody.
Yes, happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
See you next year.
Good night. Thanks, Jen. Both of you.
Jennifer and Jen.
I know you're Jennifer. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.